So this board are appealable to the chair for Davidson County. I need then a, I'm trying to, a motion to approve conducting the meeting by electronic means and suspending the rules. I'll not read the motion. You've got it in front of you. You can read it. Would somebody move that?
So I think that the items on the meeting agenda constitute essential business of this board electronically is necessary to protect the health, safety, and welfare of Tennesseans, considering the COVID-19 outbreak, and any rule that conflicts with Governor's Executive Order 16 permitting electronic meetings is suspended.
All in favor? Aye. All right, moving on then to, I assume we do not have any public comment. Board chair comments. My only comment is I want to welcome Kate to the board.
Thank you.
Was appointed, I guess, early last month and early this month or sometime. Anyway, we're happy to have you, longtime member of the foundation board and forward to working with you. So, welcome Kate.
Thank you. I look forward to being a part of it.
You'll be great. I know that. The minutes have been distributed. You've had an opportunity to look at them. Does anybody, I'll call for additions or corrections to the minutes?
Katie, I move passage as written.
Second.
Motion second. Joyce, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Host likewise. All right. Then, foundation board appointment. Kate has been on the foundation board for some period of time. Kate, my apologies for not having talked to you about this beforehand, but it would be my suggestion, and we have two of the other board foundation members also was Katie and Joyce. It would be my recommendation that you stay on the foundation board unless you would prefer not to. And, but just switch over and be the foundation, I mean, the library board representative. As, as you may remember, and as I will remind everyone, the bylaws of the foundation provide that the library board can appoint three members of the foundation board. And as I said, the existing members are Joyce and Katie. Lucy was the third member, and now she was not reappointed, obviously. So Kate, I guess I'd like to do two things. I'd like to get your consent, first of all, before we start voting on anything. And then I'll call the question.
No, I'm happy to. We'd love to.
Right, then, it does take board action as I read the bylaws for the foundation. So if, can I get a motion from somebody?
Move that Kate Ezell be a representative from the library board, the National Public Library Board Foundation.
Second.
In a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right.
I'm not.
Ballistic sort of procedure we've gone through here, but I think it does constitute board action. So I'll turn it over to Kent for updates.
Okay, we have, we have a ton of updates for you this, this month. This is almost all informational from here on out. I have quite a few things, and then we have two staff reports that I think you'll find pretty interesting. Terry and Jen will be talking about what's been going on with curbside, and then Lee has some information about where we are with collection development as, as we're moving forward. A couple of miscellaneous items before I get into the items listed on the agenda. As you're all aware, Congressman Lewis and Reverend Vivian have passed away in the last week, and those are two huge losses to the library, hopefully, obviously, the world. But hopefully, you saw the, the information we put out in our comments regarding their contributions, not just to Nashville and the civil rights movement, but to this library. They were both people that I think had a huge impact in what they were doing, and they had a huge impact in what we've been able to do with our civil rights work and civil society work here. So we were sorry to lose those folks.
Can I just say that I know we had a long discussion in the Library Foundation Board about it was time to have, to give the gala award to somebody who was minority, you know, was walking down those halls. And the fact that he chose John Lewis was the best thing ever, because people are still talking about the last time they saw John Lewis, it was at the library. So, yeah, it was great.
Yeah, I would add, Kent, that there is an excellent documentary about John Lewis that you can get on Netflix now called Good Trouble. That's, that's great. So I would urge everybody to watch it. It's really good. And the other thing I've got to report is that when John Lewis was here, you know, he did the Saturday morning lecture at MLK High School. And I've forgotten how many years ago that was, probably four, maybe some.
2016, 2016.
Four years ago, we took our then seven-year-old grandson because we wanted him to meet John Lewis. And so Dan, who's now 11, was here last night for dinner. And I said, Dan, do you remember meeting John Lewis? And he said, yes, I have the, I've got what's a poster or something on my wall. And I just thought, you know, maybe this guy will remember that for the rest of his life. I don't know.
Yes, he will.
It was, it's kind of a cool moment.
Well, I know the congressman thought a lot of our library in the civil rights room. I can, I can tell you that I always had access to him, not because of me, but because I was director of the Nashville Public Library. And several times I called and got right to him in his office regarding library issues, and was able to just stop by his congressional office in DC. And they would always get me in to say hello to him. And I can tell you getting to visit with him in 2016 at length was like maybe one of the biggest thrills, if not the biggest thrill of my life, really getting to be around somebody of that quality, that intellect, that commitment to a cause is, is just really something.
When the 2014 event, that was tremendous. I mean, we, that was a good work. That was good work.
CT Vivian, you know, who was here when we.
I said 2014.
Became really good friends with Bill and Robin King. And when he received the Congressional Medal of Honor, he invited Bill and Robin to go to White House and be there with him. And they were in the East Room when the, when President Obama presented Reverend Vivian with the medal.
I did not know that. Wow, thank you for saying that. That's huge, too.
I just remember that event, same as, similar experience, Keith. There was a lady I worked with, and they did this rite of passage for each one of their children. And part of the rite of passage means that they have to shadow somebody, an adult, as a role model, and they chose me. And I took her to see CT Vivian.
Oh, wow.
She just remembers that, you know, shares a picture with him. And he's just sharp, sharp mind to the end. Yeah.
He was a very impressive guy.
Do you all remember at the public lecture, David Ewing photograph of him from when he was in jail in Nashville?
Yeah.
And he didn't, he, he didn't realize that that was around. I just, it was so common, really.
Yeah. The, the mugshot is still up on a tripod in the civil rights room.
Well, but the shock that they're going all over the news is from the, the stage on, you know, that stage here in Nashville.
Right, right. And then the other piece that's kind of, I don't know, last week, the archives, as they were going through the court records from the metro courts, just stumbled upon the, the, the court records for the sit-ins and John Lewis's arrest along with the others. And I happened to be in the room when they were just pulling them out. It was kind of crazy, but anyway. So, anyway.
I just hope there is somebody in the next generation that comes along that, as, as they say, can be the conscience of the Congress and the conscience of the country as John Lewis was and CT Vivian was. They, they leave them alone.
Well, I think they're coming along given what's happening. They're coming.
Good.
Was it saying that each, each generation has to fight for its own freedom? Yeah, they're coming. Yeah. Proud of them.
Kent, what else? What next?
We've got some good news. I've got a little bit of good news here. The literacy blueprint submitted, did a submission to the Campaign for Grade Level Reading Space Center Recognition that listeners can submit, and we are finalists for that.
Oh, good.
And of course, that's a collaboration with Alignment, United Way, and a number of other partners, including schools. So that's pretty exciting. We just found out last week, the Church Street Park will be closed July 27 through the eight, through August 16, as they try and refresh the park. And the, the group, the, the foundation that is trying to refurbish and revitalize that park is still planning on doing some events around August 18. I'm not sure what those are going to be, but I, we found this out late, late last week. But I do not believe we will be engaged in that because our opening of the Votes for Women Room will be virtual. Correct, Katie?
That is exactly what we're saying right now. And I don't, I, I hope that their opening the park that day doesn't change our plans, to be honest.
Yeah. It's going to be a challenge for them to do that, I think. But again, they're closing the park on the 27th. And then kind of another positive thing, Lindsay and Clem Marie from our Bringing Books to Life staff and our Southeast branch manager have been doing programs around racist children's literature. You may recall that they provided you folks a presentation some time ago. Well, they have taken the show on the road, and since the start of the year, they have presented to 2,000-plus people virtually and in person regarding what we've done about looking at racist literature here in Nashville Public Library. They presented to the Tennessee Library Association, the Memphis Public Library, Brentwood Public Library, and they had a program at the Public Library Association Conference. And they are queued up to present to, to organizations in the coming months, Massachusetts State Library and Indiana State Library, and just talking about how we process and the, the way we look at these works, older works that are, literature that are clearly racist, and how we use them as a teaching moment within our collections to talk about the perspective and the history behind those. But anyway, I think that's really quite something that, that this program and this work that we've done internally has taken off as a national model.
Adriana to the meeting. I say we're welcoming Adriana to the meeting now.
Oh, good.
Hi.
Oh, sorry, Adriana?
What?
Hello.
Hello.
Good to see you. And the last quick thing I'll mention with miscellaneous before I get into some more detail on a number of things is just that there is a phone number that people can call for messages to the board. And we had our first call ever the day before yesterday, or yesterday, I guess. And there was a woman wondering if we could print off the mail-in ballots, voting ballots for people and distribute them. And we, I think Terry will be talking about curbside printing with the curbside service, but it is a felony for a third party to print off a mail-in ballot form and give it to somebody else. They do need to request it from the Election Commission or print it off themselves. So anyway.
Do we, do, do we have the applications, though, available for people? I mean, that would be the thing, it seems like.
They, they can print them off, yes, and distribute them if requested, but we can't just hand them out.
Oh, the application for the ballot.
Yeah, right. And they actually are available. You can call the Election Commission and they will mail them to you. So, so that would be where we would direct people.
Okay. Seems like we can.
I'll follow up on that, if I may. Kent, we don't have the application to apply for a ballot at the libraries? I thought we had those at the library.
We're, what we do is we, if people had walked in and picked them, picked them up, yes. But what we do now is direct them to the Election Commission.
Oh, I got it. You're talking about now during COVID when you can't walk online?
Right, right. Put them on a, can you put, put it on the website so that they can just print it off the website?
We can, we can put the information on the website if it's not there now.
No, no, the application.
No.
But you can put a link on the website to where you get it, is what I think.
Yeah, they, we can, they need to go to the elec, they need to access the Election Commission.
And Keith, you know why that's really cool? You, when you send in your executed ballot, however, whatever that word is, that adjective, you can track on the website whether or not it's gone back and that they have, which I think is, I don't know, makes me feel better.
I didn't know that. Because we sent hours in, yeah.
You can, I've got the links. I tweeted it. I was excited about it. I'll send it to everybody.
We voted absentee for the election.
Yeah. But anyway, I did call the woman back and made sure she knew how to go. So.
Okay.
Okay, now, the next thing I'd like to talk to you about is give you kind of a running history of what has happened in the last four days involving early voting, which beyond the oddness of a usual year was even odder this year as it kicked off. As you recall, our new policy called for us, for the library to provide a tent for library campaigns so that rather than having miscellaneous.
Sorry, I couldn't quite hear you.
Rather than having miscellaneous tents by other campaigns that were not approved, that we just had the one campaign, one tent for shelter. Early last week on Wednesday, I believe, the, the election folks at the Secretary of State's office made the decision that people could vote even if they were not wearing a mask, and that they could not be denied access to voting locations for a mask if they did not have a, if they chose not to wear a mask. Our team and the branches and administration and Susan and Terry and everybody worked with the Election Commission to set up social distancing, social distance queuing in our regional libraries where we would not allow more than five or six people in the building at a time. Those people would be ready to go into the meeting room and vote when the, the people in there were no longer voting. And the Election Commission was extremely helpful in doing this. They also helped mark off places for people to stand six feet apart outside the buildings so that there would be social distancing. Then on Friday, our best-laid plans went totally awry. The heat index was over 100. People were calling both the mayor's office and the state complaining about how hot it was standing outside, waiting in line to vote. So the Office of Emergency Management made the call that we needed to allow people to stand in line in the library buildings. And at that point, it became very difficult for us to social distance. We were going to be in a situation where we were going to need to have people snaking through the building potentially in order to observe social distancing. We were also, of course, going to have those folks without masks standing in line in our buildings. So I made the call to go ahead and close down our branches since our staff would not be able to move through the building without encountering these folks if they were in, in the stacks searching for books or other materials to satisfy the curbside requests. So at that point, we closed the branches at 3:00 in the afternoon. We had calls going back and forth with OEM and the mayor's office and some others. They totally understood why we were closing and supported it at that point. Lines removed in the buildings and, and they are in the buildings now. The main library is still open for curbside. On Friday, we closed all the regional branches just for a uniform approach. Over the weekend, including Friday night and Saturday and Sunday, our team was looking at communication, logistics, how we can potentially move materials to smaller branches, even though we knew that that was not going to be ideal, how we would make people aware of holds, how we were going to communicate with the public with what was going on. Late Saturday afternoon, we made the decision that it was not practical to move curbside service to smaller locations just because of the time element and moving materials and notifying folks of holds and the logistical piece within those buildings that we already knew would exist. Southeast did reopen on Monday. At Southeast, they are queuing up in the lobby between the Parks Community Center and the libraries, so we were able to, to separate that so there's not an issue with providing curbside service at parks. We had put out information to the public about what they need to do in order to, to realign their holds, if they wish to pick them up somewhere else, or if they wish to pick them up when the branches reopen in August. So that is kind of the, the nutshell. Real quickly, what happened as far as curbside itself went on. But that is not the only story of, of the fun and games that we were having this weekend. As you may be aware, there have been petition drives to recall the mayor, recall the council people, and have another referendum on the property tax. Earlier last week, before the, the polls opened, these groups during the petition had tents set up in Isma and off of library property that was not on the property. As soon as voting started on Friday, these groups started to try and move into our tents, set up their tables and their signs, and kind of take over the tents. I was personally involved at Green Hills and asking them to take their tent down and move out, which they did when they were asked. I think at one point, they were also trying to pass the petitions in line with the voters, which they are not allowed to do because that's within 100 feet of the polling place. We kind of had a back and forth on the weekend with these folks, trying to keep them from dominating the tents. One location, the police were called and asked to check out what was going on in the tents because the group also was not wearing masks and they were not social distancing, and they were on metro property. In that location, the police did not believe they had enough to issue a citation, although they did request that they wear masks. So we received a, a number of hits on social media and some calls to the library. And I've received some emails about people wondering if we were endorsing these groups because these wonderful tents, incredibly looking, good-looking tents that we had happened to have the NPL logo on them. We covered the logo Sunday, although I understand that the petition drives actually were ending for the most part. Katie?
Well, they submitted it today, and I got a newsflash that said they had five signatures.
Five?
Five, total.
Wow.
That may, that, that's, that's a little blurb I got probably an hour ago that they submitted an hour ago. That may be incorrect, but.
Yeah.
But that's just from one branch? No, they submitted, no, they, they submitted all of the signatures and there were five. Anyway, more to come on that, but.
Yeah. So anyway, we've been dealing with that at length. I have to tell you, the Office of Emergency Management was incredible to work with. They communicated in a great way. The Election Commission couldn't have been more helpful. The mayor's office, I was going back and forth with repeatedly, and they were supportive and they understood what we were dealing with. So, all in all, we got through the weekend. I think our admin team, I kind of joke, we were on, we had a Zoom meeting, those of us that were dealing with it on Saturday afternoon. And I kind of joked with them that it seems like all we were doing was crisis management lately in the COVID era. But I have to tell you, I was really proud of our team, the way they all came together, you know, working Friday night, working Saturday and Sunday to try and figure out how we dealt with this. So at this point, we are doing curbside at the main library in Southeast. And when we get through the elections, eventually, all the regionals will be open again to, to provide those services. So are there any questions about curbside, or pardon me, about the early voting? Okay.
I was going to say, great work, great work on everybody's part at the library because this is so complicated, and now it's complicated 10 times over. And it's pretty amazing what you all were able to pull off over the weekend.
Well, thank you. Thank you. We have a great team. Now into the pieces of the actual agenda here. The budget, the budget as it came out, we basically had a flat budget. It showed that it was a couple hundred thousand less than last year. But the money that was not in there was the community grants that we do in the literacy area that is being funded through CARES Act money. It is not coming from metro revenue streams, so that is why it was not shown in that revenue stream. Our positions that we've been holding open as part of the budget saving process, we've been told that we no longer need to freeze those positions. So we will slowly but surely be rolling those out and trying to, to fill in the gaps where we need it. Obviously paying attention to the fact that all of our locations are not open at this time, and trying to achieve some cost savings for metro. We were told in a meeting with department heads that while we have these budgets at the time currently, you never know what's going to happen with the revenue over the year. And so have a plan B if, if the worst happens. And right now, I think our plan B is to come up with some early savings in the personnel budget so that if we are told to save money later on, that we've already achieved some savings. The real downside of, of the budget is that the 17 positions that we had lost in the previous budget, we had requested to have put back. budget, we had requested to have put back in, and they were not put back in the budget. So we are in effect down 17 positions on the books from where we were two years, two budgets ago, which ultimately could create a problem as we reopen branches. I'm hoping it will not initially. At our last board meeting, we talked about potential branch closures, and I'm not ready to bring any plans to you at this point about that, just as we monitor COVID and see how it goes. But 17 positions off the books is a huge hit. And as we try and realign staff, it's really hard to know how we're going to make that up, but we'll kind of keep an eye on that. So any questions about the budget? Okay. The other item I had on here was COVID. Just a, really just a couple of quick things. As you, you know, we monitor the health information and Nashville is a hotspot right now, continues to be a hotspot nationally. I've had a few side conversations with Keith. I do not see an upside in opening the buildings anytime soon until the surge is under control. We are watching it. I was looking at the list of Urban Library Council libraries that are open to the public, the buildings, and there are 160 people on the list, and there are five libraries open that are open to the public in any way, shape, or form.
Ken, would it be, would it help if we, if we removed all of the computer stations?
I don't think so. It's a matter of keeping people socially distanced, even with, even without the computers. And honestly, Robert, I think one of the things we'd want to do that people really need is computer access. And so if we, if we pull the computers, I think we're actually just kind of pulling one of the main reasons they'd be in our building. So, good to see you, Robert. Didn't know you were there.
I've been here all along, but I've been on the phone, but I wasn't able to talk on the phone, so I kept fooling around with the computer till I finally got in. But I've been here all along. You haven't been able to hear me, but I've been here all the whole through, whole, whole time.
Good. I, I will say, we, we have had a couple of positive cases in library staff, but I think because of the, the protocols that Metro and our HR folks have instituted, we've been able to keep the folks that have tested positive for the virus separate. So we've not, we've not seen it spread through the, through the system. We do continue to monitor that. The next piece that we're going to be watching carefully in regards to staffing is the, the FMLA component where people do have some time that they can stay home with their, their kids and if they are not in school. So we're going to have to see what that potentially does to the number of staff that we have available. But we are on the threshold of learning that pretty quickly, I think. So that's kind of a stay tuned.
Ken, when, when Metro schools opens up, are we going to continue to do the same programming?
I'm sorry, continue to do the.
Same programming.
I believe we are. One of the, and Liel can talk about this later, but one of the things that we've really shifted to is we've, we've acquired more eBooks that are associated with the curriculum at the schools, and we'll still be doing them in those libraries in a different way. So we'll have all that stuff in place. It's just that it's going to be a very different world in the way we provide it. I'm not sure what the NASA plans are at this point, and we're going to have to figure that out.
If they do open schools, you know, go back to schools in, in person in Labor Day, is that, would you then think that we would open about the same time?
I've never looked at our schedules necessarily being consistent with the schools, just based upon the fact that we're dealing with the entire population, but that's probably a Again, a lot of what they're going to be accessible, a lot of what the students are going to be accessing is going to be available online. So it's going to be a tough call, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I, I hear you, and I don't know. I, I don't agree with you. I don't know that you're necessarily tied to schools thing, but I, I just don't see how the schools are going to open again every day either.
I don't either.
I don't either.
And that's sad. Golly, we're just, we're just killing the school age population. It's terrible.
We're going to have a gap.
Yeah, and it's again access because you guys have the computers and what we're seeing is a lot, it's still despite being given computers, they don't have access. So the library might be a place where they can. So it is, it's, it's a shame, that's all. And I don't know what's.
Right. I do wish there was some way, and I voiced this with you before, Ken, I just wish there was some way that we could let people into the building that needed computer usage, even if it were just school students, you know, like you were saying. I mean, so, you know, not in there to browse books, not in there to check out books, just, you know, some sort of corridor to the, to the computers or something. I, I don't know. I mean, it's, you know, that's what bothers me most about having, having all the buildings closed is I think, I think a lot of people need access to that stuff.
Ken, were you at Rotary, did you attend a Rotary meeting on Monday?
No.
Because Dr. Battle was there, and she talked about the plan for opening because they're also talking about dealing with hotspots for the kids. It's going to take them three to four months to deliver all these iPads and all that kind of thing. So still, there's still going to be a lag. And she was talking about, and I'm trying to remember in what context she was trying to get the churches and maybe organizations, they may have to do some neighborhood programming, you know.
Is that right? Well, and one, one thing.
Oh, good.
Part of Dr. Battle's thing too, and I think this connects to what Kent, I mean, to what Keith was just saying, Kent, and it may not be possible in our, in our configuration at all, but the, the schools, the cafeterias are staying open and food will be delivered to all students who, to, to all students who need free and reduced, who are on free and reduced lunch. And to me, there's a lot of connection on that, providing that service as providing the computer debt and computer use of people who don't have anywhere else to go. So I don't know if we can make it work, but I think there's kind of trying to figure out a way to, to provide a service at a time when no one else can do it is a great thing.
Yeah, it's actually working with Dr. Battle in terms of offering, if there's a way. I mean, I see my patients, it's devastating. They have no computers, and besides that, they have nobody to work with them. So it's, they might have even the computer, but God, who's going to do homework? It's appalling. And when they have five at home, I, it's just a huge mountain to climb, and I don't know how we could help.
Well, we are paying attention to it. Elise, I see Elise is on the call, and Elise and her team are in constant communication with the schools and talking about this. Elise, did you have any comments?
Well, no, only just to add that what you're saying is correct. So we're keeping in touch. Kids are getting equipment from school. NASA has purchased, I think, something like 400 iPads for students. So we're trying to, you know, make sure that there's broadest access as possible. I think Lee is also in discussion about expanding the opportunity from our parking lot to get on the wireless, so if any of that helps.
That would be terrific.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're in constant communication with the schools, and a lot of the conversation is around access, so.
Ken, with the conversation that Joyce referred to, the idea was that when kids don't go to school, parents have this problem of childcare, so could they, these churches and neighborhoods as places where kids could go and be supervised and help with their schoolwork while parents are at home? That is such a big sentence, but, I mean, everything that MNPS is trying to do involves really big sentences, so I, I don't know how the, if the library could help with that.
That has not been brought up for us to be a place where the kids can go, but I do know that the childcare centers for the younger ones, there are a number of childcare centers who are opening for essential workers. And just to go back to something else that was said previously about programming, that we're talking with Alignment Nashville and MNPS about providing virtual programs. So there's STEM programs, there's actually, it's STEAM. So there are a lot of, from Limitless and Studio, Bringing Books to Life, Be Well. There are a couple of areas of service that we can provide, digital programming for the children during the school day. So we're in the conversation regarding that as well.
Any other questions? Thanks, Elise. Have we lost Keith?
Here.
Okay, I just can't see you. Well, we will keep on it as, as we always are. We're always looking at things and trying to figure out how we provide service, and we will keep on it. And very quickly, Votes for Women, it's exciting. And Katie, if you want to jump on here when I get through, all of our content is to the, to the vendors for the panels and much of the content for the touchscreens. It'll be the basis for programming in the space is moving to the vendors as well. 1220 and Dalton Anode, the Ring the Bell campaign that you've all heard about, it's going forward. And on August 18th, we're preparing to have a virtual grand opening in the median. So there are a lot of exciting things going on. It's beginning to feel like we're, we're really about there. We had a content meeting, that was the last week, and I just, I personally got very excited in hearing about everything that we're doing. Andrea has a huge lineup of things that going forward with the programming. It's really focused on the schools. A lot of it is virtual right now, obviously, and just some really great stuff. And I think the, the work that Rebecca Price has done around really making sure the content is accurate and tells a great story is sensational, frankly. So like I said, I was just excited when we were on the call the other day. I felt really good about where it's going, so. Katie, are you still there?
I am still here, and really what I would like to add, I think Andrea Fonta is on this call, and she's got some really exciting news that I would love for her to share because she's, she's kind of been driving that train. Andrea, you here?
Yep.
I am here. Can everybody hear me?
Yes. Yes.
So we are really looking forward to the virtual opening of Votes for Women on August 18th. Everybody, please mark your calendars, and Evite will be going out shortly, but please go ahead and mark your calendars now. So August 18th at 11:30 a.m. Central Time. And some of you may, might already know the history behind this, which we are leveraging for the virtual opening to kind of come full circle on the 18th. What I'm talking about is in 1920, when the 19th Amendment was ratified, cities across the U.S. rang bells in celebration, but Nashville actually did not. Nashville remained silent. So we have, in a concept that Katie created, come up with a way to, to leverage that, leverage that concept now. We're basically inviting people to break that silence by ringing a bell, literally ringing a bell. It can be the chimes on your cell phone, a dinner bell, whatever little bell you have. Thank you very much.
Bob, I sent you a request yesterday for your.
Yes, well, you know what helped me is if there was a boilerplate letter that I could send that to all.
I'll send it to you right now. I got it.
Okay, I need that for, if I could get that to all the publicists on Music Row, I can mobilize the music community, but I'd like to have some kind of a little elevator speech.
No problem, no problem. We got it. Keep going though, Andrea, but we'll get it to you today, Bob. Thank you, thank you.
So the campaign is called Ring the Bell, and it launched July 9th. It's a digital campaign, so if you go to the library's social media channels, you will see that people have taken up our invitation to tell us who they are and the cause that they care about today that means the most to them, the cause for which they as individuals are ringing a bell. And we have seen people ring the bell and tell us about causes, everything about access to healthcare opportunities, to ringing the bell for sons and daughters who are currently serving in the military. So the way this comes full circle on August 18th is that during this virtual opening that begins at 11:30 a.m. Central Time, and it'll be broadcast on the library's YouTube channel, Nashville Public Library channel on YouTube, we are actually going to end the virtual opening celebration by asking everyone who's watching to ring their bells. And we're also organizing cities and universities, including Belmont University and other institutions across the city, to ring their institutional bells at noon. So bells will be ringing in people's homes as they're watching the virtual opening, but then also in surround sound across our city. Additionally.
You want that to happen at noon?
You'll get it, Bob. Everything will be, I'll send it to you. You'll have it all.
Got it.
Additionally, this is not public knowledge yet, so please keep it confidential until we are able to break the news in coming weeks, but.
Andrea, this is a public meeting. I don't know who all is listening.
That's right. Sorry. Thank you for that. Really, all I was, we have a very special musical guest who's going to join us for the August 18th opening. I can't believe I just nearly committed the largest communication faux pas in the history of the library, but that aside, you will see, you will see news in coming days about a very, very special musical guest who's going to be a part of that virtual opening. So that'll be even more exciting news to share. So again, just to recap.
And finally, Andrea, you've got a lot of national media hooks that she's not, she's not talking about.
So we were very lucky to get CBS Sunday Morning. Actually, because of the relationship that the Votes for Women project has built with, has built with Elaine Weiss. Elaine Weiss is the one who actually mentioned us to CBS Sunday Morning, and so we spent the last week working with the producer and, and camera crew from CBS Sunday Morning. They were here at the library and did a really beautiful set of interviews with Margaret Bem and Jeannie Nelson and Julie Mosley. So that story should run early to mid-August, probably, we're thinking August 16th, closer to the virtual opening, but again. But again, we'll need to get confirmation from CBS of when exactly they're going to run their package. But it's panning out to be a really beautiful story and Margaret and Jeannie and Julie did a really beautiful job with their interviews.
Thank you, Andrea. That was a fabulous recap. And I just want everybody to know on this board, what an amazing job the library has done, both on what Andrea is just talking about and how much time she has spent on taking what's happening in our library nationwide. It's just, it's incredible. Also, I'm going to give a shout out, Kent talked about this, but a shout out to Andrea and to Jenna, all the work that they have done in actually getting the room where it is. It's just, it's a colossal effort and it's just amazing that we're going to have another, you know, national treasure right down the hall from the Civil Rights Room. And it's going to be as great and as visited. And it's pretty amazing what the team has put together and they won't say it on their own behalf.
I saw the, you know, Kent talked about the petitions to recall the mayor. And I saw that when he did his I ring the bell for, they're putting all of the negative comments under that. So I don't know if you all had gotten to see any of that.
This is Andrea again. We have seen that. Honestly, we don't feel like it detracts from, from the visibility of the campaign. Obviously, that's something that the mayor's communications staff will need to manage more closely. But, but overall, we've gotten really good response to the campaign. Deputy Mayor Haywood also did a video that's running. And Kimberly Williams Paisley did a video that's brought us a lot of visibility. So, you know, unrelated comments aside, it's unfortunate that people are kind of piggybacking on something positive for their, for their own agendas. But that aside, the overall tone and response to the campaign has been really, really positive.
And Andrea, people have asked me, this is at Belmont, you know, I'm on that community outreach committee. Is there any way to purchase bells that the library has already done? If you could just get me that information later.
Sure, I'll follow up with you on that.
Okay, thank you.
I'll help you, Andrea.
On the video you were just talking about, where did they appear? Are they on the website or?
I'm sorry, Keith, you were breaking out.
The videos that she was talking about, Kimberly.
You can find them, you can find them on the library site, but they're also on Facebook and Twitter and all the places where you hang out, Keith.
I mean, honestly, you have to, you have to sign up for Facebook to be able to participate in this.
No, you do not. And the library, if you will do one, we've offered this to a number of people who have a high profile. And I'm not being a jerk here and I'm being serious like you do. Andrea will put them out on the library's.
Okay, good.
Social platforms, which for all of us who are library board members, that would be a much stronger platform than for us to put in our own platform.
Okay.
Right. So if we would all do one on behalf of the library board, and we could still do it for every, any cause that we think it can be, the library could be another cause, Andrea will blast that out on behalf of the library. And I think that would be powerful. I'm saying that for Andrea. Don't you agree, Andrea?
Absolutely. In fact, we will go ahead and mail each of you a branded Votes for Women bell that you can use to short shoot your videos and then get you information about how to get those video clips to me. And we would love for you guys to participate.
That's, I know how to make the clip. I just don't know how to post it. Should I put it on Facebook and you'll get it off of there? Or do I post it to you?
So we'll send an email with instructions about how you can get it done most easily.
What you do is make it on your phone and then just flip it to Andrea via text or email at her email address and she'll take it from there for you.
Okay.
Okay, so this is the, what I'm ringing the bell for thing that we're talking about there?
Yes.
Do people also put those on like Twitter strings and that kind of thing?
And Instagram, I mean, any social, any social platform. But we'll send you an example. I'll tell you, Kimberly Williams' page is great. And in the email that Andrea sends, all of this will be in there. But, but in her text, she's saying she's doing it for the Nashville Public Library. But in her video, she says, I ring the bell for women, you know, against women, against domestic violence. I think it's domestic violence or it might be for women's rights all over the world. I mean, she has a very specific thing she's ringing the bell for. And then that is connected with the larger campaign and with the library.
What mine says is that I'm ringing it on the, what mine says is I'm ringing it for the 100th anniversary of women getting the right to vote on behalf of social justice movements everywhere.
That's great.
Exactly. It's perfect. But you could also say, I ring it for you have the power or I am ringing the bell to, you know, to save dogs and cats. It can be what is ever personally motivating to anyone as part of this campaign.
Okay. Any more, anything else on that?
I think we've got them for women, Keith.
Yeah. All right, let's move to Terry and Jenna on the curbside service because we don't have much time left.
Hi, this is Jenna. So we're going to give you some information about how curbside service has been going. It's been about a month and a half since we entered phase one of our reopening plan and started curbside service on June 8. We started at, and we're doing seven regional branches and Maine prior to the happenings this weekend. So the service has been, has been very popular and our public has shown so much gratitude to having access to library materials again. And we are, we are continuing to grow and add some services to our curbside. So Terry has, has a presentation to show you some of the slides and information. Are you, are you ready to go, Terry?
I'm waiting too. I'm waiting for Debbie to give me access. I can't share the PowerPoint yet. So Debbie, this is Lynn, we need to do it. Sorry.
Okay, I need to make Lynn the presenter or Terry Luke?
Terry Luke.
Okay, Terry Luke the presenter. And while we're waiting, I just wanted to add, there was a question earlier about voting registrations. And the League of Women's Voters has reached out to us. To add to our curbside service, they are creating some sandwich boards that we can put out by our curbside service. We'll have QR codes on them. So the QR code will take people directly to voter registration handles. So we hope to have those sandwich boards coming soon.
Thanks, Jenna.
Okay, sorry, we're having a technical difficulty on this end now that I'm trying to share the application. I'm totally out of my screen. Okay, we're working on it.
Since we're running long here, Terry, can you give it verbally if we can't get to it?
Yeah, I should have it up in one minute, Kent. We got, I hit the wrong button at first.
There we are. There we are.
Okay, yep, we got it. I accidentally hit something. Okay, so sorry about that. This is the first time I've been, we've been using this, but I haven't actually done a presentation. So, and of course, I'm doing this from a home office and our exterminator just came. So if you hear barking in the background, that would be, that would be our Minister Schnauzer. It all has to happen right now. So I, so basically, the first slide is just to let you know that, you know, curbside is now available at the Southeast Branch and Maine during regular operating hours. And what I'd like to do is show you some statistics on the next couple of slides, just to let you know honestly how successful the curbside has been even from the first week. So the curbside statistics will include the other seven regional libraries, which of course are Bellevue, Bordeaux, Edmondson Pike, Green Hills, Tempehage, Madison, Southeast, and then our main library. And I just want to say, I didn't hear what Jenna said to start because of course I was trying to get this up. But Jenna and the Maine staff have been so gracious about taking this on now that we had to close some of the regional libraries. So when we're looking at this slide, what it's telling you is that for our averages for the first four weeks, 18,000 checkouts per week. We're serving, we serve on average 5,000 customers per week. And we pulled 23,000 holes per week. Green Hills is checking out the most books, followed by Edmondson Pike and Bellevue. And if you all have any questions during this, I know we're running late, so I'm going to try to go through in a hurry. So on this bar graph, the orange represents the average number of patrons. It's the lighter orange, the smaller bar, the red, the average number of holes, and the light brown, the average number of hold place. And I think that one of the things I hope that everybody knows is that this started out as book, a book service for people to be able to place their books on hold and to come and pick them up at any of these locations. However, this has like blossomed into, our staff are so creative and so wonderful and they feel badly that the physical building isn't open to our customers. So they are doing everything they can to provide as much as possible without physically being able to open the doors. So this includes storytime craft kits, which have been mutually popular. The other service is book bundles. So we can actually, a customer can call in or, and let us know, I would like 10 books on, you know, going on summer vacation, or I would like, I've read all of the, you know, Christian books and what would you recommend? So we're actually doing book bundles. And one, Lisa Bluebird at Madison put one together for a customer and she actually posted on Facebook how wonderful that her and her son enjoyed 20 very diverse, you know, well-represented, her, their bundle. The other thing we're doing, because of course Summer Challenge is usually, you know, robust and going on. So we're providing, on July 15th, we started doing prizes and the reading logs through curbside. The next thing that we're doing, we're piloting this week at Maine, is actually customers being able to request two times during the day, an actual, I don't have a printer at home. Can you please print these for me? And then we put them in a bag, just like everything else, and they're able to come and pick them up. And when the regionals reopen, we will go ahead and provide that. Because one of the calls that we have been getting is about not having a printer at home. So our staff, you know, rallied and they provided admin teams with a proposal. We're providing voter registration forms, tax forms, library card applications. Summer Unbound, when it becomes available, that will also go in every single bag. And we're really happy that Catherine Bryant from Bellevue and her committee actually, we had a number of calls about the seed exchange. So they're providing seed packets as well. And so the last thing I'll just share is that I included in my board report the number of compliments that we have been getting from our customers about the curbside service. The picture on the left is actually from our Edmondson Pike Library. You know, they're putting up a sign that they, I miss y'all. And then at Green, at Green Hills, that same young lady also, I'll show you my concluding slide. It's from her as well, but Green Hills posted on Facebook, I enjoyed going to the Nashville Public Green Hills France Library today for the first time in my life. You drive up, you phone in with your library card number, and then the math and glove library folks come out with the items you placed on hold and all bagged up. Genius. Everybody stays, stays safe. I really missed it. So, and then the last slide I have is, you know, our staff at Edmondson Pike waving about Google coming to see us again. And one of their customers saying, thank you, we love you. So I'll open it. Jenna, do you want to add anything or then we can also take questions?
I don't think I have much to add. Are there any questions?
So how does the, how does the 18,000 checkouts compare to, that's for, that's for what period of time?
So that's in the average per week that we're doing. So that would be in a week's time, the number of checkouts that we would have. So that's the average in a week. And then you have to multiply that for the month to get the average number of checkout. And my statistic person, Bernie, is on. So to be honest, I didn't write down our average number overall for our month. Kent, do you know that?
That was my question. What do you, what, what would be, what's our checkouts per month? I don't have this graph thing in front of me. What do we normally do? Just trying to get a sense of.
This is Lee. I'm going to do a little slide in my presentation that will show those numbers.
Thank you, Lee.
Yeah.
Sounds like the curbside program is growing great. Good job, everybody.
They are. They're doing great, great stuff. I occasionally drop in unannounced and just kind of check out what's going on. And everybody's rocking. They're, they're excited to be working and really providing a service. And you can tell the patrons are pleased, so.
Kent, people don't love secret shoppers.
I'm not in secret when I walk in, believe me. Hey, Lee, are you ready?
I've got to duck out, join another meeting.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Stay safe.
You, Joyce, stay, stay safe.
All right, bye bye. Thank you.
Okay, can you all hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, can you see my screen?
Yeah. There's just a little title card right now.
Okay. Kent, I thought you all would appreciate a brief update on circulation trends during COVID. And I think I just lost it. Okay, here we go. Sorry about that. Well, I'm happy to report that eresources are trending up. When we look at all e-media circulation, so the yellow, the orange line is 2020 and the blue line is 2019.
Likely.
Yeah, we're seeing background screen with nothing on it.
Hmm, let me see. How about now?
There you go.
There you go.
Here we go, okay. So eresources are trending up. This is a line graph that compares 2020 to 2019 over the past six months. And if you look at the COVID period, so April, May, and June is where we have four months of data, the average of those three months is a 24.1% increase. This is all e-media, so ebooks, e-audio books, e-video, and e-magazines. Looking at just ebooks, we're seeing a 34.5% average increase. With e-videos, we see nearly 70% increase from 2020 to 2019. Of course, this makes sense when you think about how popular Netflix is right now, and for people who don't have Netflix, the library is offering this important service. So we upped the number of checkouts that individuals can check out through Hoopla from 10 to 15. This is more budget, but it seems like a very important resource during this time for mental health and for no other reason. Our e-magazine and e-audio book circulations are holding pretty steady. A little bit of an increase in the e-audio book circulation. And our physical materials, here's the data down in the bottom part of your screen. The green line is now 2020. Of course, when we were completely closed in April, that was almost nothing. But then in May, we saw renewals of items that individuals already had at their homes. And then in June, you see that curbside is really picking up, that's my funny joke for the presentation, but over 200,000 circulations in June. When we look at children under the age of 12, we see tremendous increases. Our ebooks are over 181% more over the months of April through June than what they were in 2019. And our e-audio books are showing a 52.7% increase compared to 2019. When we look at the teenagers, we also see an increase, over 30% more ebooks, and our e-audio books are nearly 5% more. Additionally, I wanted to thank Limitless and Elise's team for giving us $56,000 to purchase an additional 2,330 titles. And we also collaborated together with MNPS, so the schools, to do an inventory of all the titles we have at the branches and at the school, the public school library locations, of their core curriculum titles to really give them a snapshot of the inventory as we move into this next full year, and how we can support them. So we're seeing success in services. And I thought this was an update that everyone could feel good about, and definitely there's a lot of behind the scenes staff working on this, from the selectors identifying diverse collections, making sure that we're purchasing titles that will resonate with all members of our community, negotiating discounts with our vendors, we've seen a lot of success with that. And then it's the catalogers making sure that the metadata gets entered into the catalog so that the public can find what they're looking for. And our systems team, making sure that the website and the discovery interface and the catalog, all these behind the scenes bug fixes to make sure due dates are extended and that items are delivered to the correct branch. And of course, the technology team that keeps that server and network connectivity going and all the operating systems up to date. Not to mention our finance department and programs and marketing that are keeping everything in the forefront of people's minds. So I'm really excited to see how this trend is happening with our eresources. That's my presentation, if there are any questions, we'll be happy.
Frankly, I'm amazed, I'm just stunned by how well it's, how circulation is staying, is increasing in those departments.
Keith, did that get your question?
Yeah, that's great, that's exactly what I was trying to, that's what I was asking. I just wonder if this is not going to be a paradigm going forward.
And that's going to be the interesting thing to figure out. And of course, the implications are that suddenly you have another service point within your buildings that you're trying to provide service at in addition to having the buildings open. So if it is, we're going to have to figure out how we do it initially without additional resources, to be kind of challenging. I think there are different ways we can approach that, whether it's a certain time period that you provide curbside or whatever. But I think it's certainly a possibility people are going to expect it going forward.
Yeah, I mean, once you get people liking it, it's hard to take it away, you know?
Yeah, yeah. But we want them in our buildings too, eventually.
I know, it may not be, but...
We were advocacy sensitive and sort of trying to build that capacity. These are all facts that, as the story continues to be told, I would love to begin the conversation before we're in budget season with people on Metro Council and certainly with the mayor's office. So in whatever, I saw somewhere a chart that had all of this sort of succinctly put together in one place, or was that wishful thinking? But whatever, over time, COVID is not going to go away, as you said, Kent. They're going to want this and want more of it. And reading your report before this meeting, it just seems like we ought to be ahead of it with these people who are able to allocate money to us.
I agree.
And the other question I had, can we, how do we get access to the Racism in Literature or Virtual Program? That's something on the website? No.
I'm sorry, I couldn't understand you, Kate.
The Racism in Literature or Virtual Program?
I can see if we have a copy of that, we can get it to you guys.
I'd love to see it.
Okay, happy to do it.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, is that in?
I think that's in.
Lee, thank you, that was great, appreciate you doing that. And Jenna, and Terry, the same to you, we appreciate it.
That's all.
Thank you.
All right, if there's anything else, we will stand adjourned.
I'll let you know how the library is, I'm going to go vote.
I'm going to be working remotely the rest of the week, and then I'm going to take vacation next week. So I'm really going to try and stay off email as much as I can, so.
And we may or may not have an August meeting. Normally, we do have an August meeting, but we'll just see, and we'll just see how it goes.
The other boards that I'm on that normally don't have August meetings are now having them.
One of the things about our August meeting date, it is noon on August 18, would be our normal meeting date.
That won't do, that's the day of the exhibit.
Well, I mean, actually, it could do.
No, that's the day of the opening of the exhibit, the Votes for Women exhibit, that's the event.
What better time to have the library board together?
Well, we'll all be ringing our bells if we are.
We are.
I was going to ask, will anybody be in person at the, in the room on August 18?
No, not right now. We don't know whether the room will be open, whether the library will be open. So everything revolves around not having to be in the room. The mayor has already told us that he would not, he wouldn't come in the room if there were more than 25 people, and that's, I think that might even include outside, so.
Who said that?
The mayor.
Yeah, so, okay. But there's going to be a, somewhere on Facebook or something, a ceremony.
It's on the library website, Kent.
Yeah, although the ceremony itself...
It's on the library's YouTube channel.
Right.
Mr. Simmons, we'll be sure to get you an e-vite that has all the information so you know exactly where to tune in and where to click in order to be part of the virtual opening.
It would be nice if it was Zoom instead of WebEx.
No kidding.
Sorry, Debbie.
I'm ducking out, too.
Okay, well, thank you all.
Okay, bye. Thank you.
Bye.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again or for more information about this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.